I call to order, oops, is that me? Oh, Sam. Okay, sorry. I called to order the regular meeting of the City of Campbell City Councils this Tuesday, March 5th, 2024. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ivy.
Present.
Councilmember Fratato.
Here.
Councilmember Spazola.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Landry.
Present. And I would like to invite Ann Heresy from the American Red Cross of Silicon Valley to lead us in the pledge allegiance. Please come forward and tap on the thing to turn the speaker red.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, indivisible and just as well.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere yet. Okay. All right. Thank you, Ann, for leading the pledge. I'm also going to be giving you a proclamation for Red Cross Month. It is going to be accepted by Ann Heresy, the dias- Okay, let's start over. The disaster services Northern California coastal region of the American Red Cross of the Silicon Valley. Red Cross flats. Every eight minutes, Red Cross heroes truly make a difference in local neighborhoods and across the nation by preparing, responding, and recovering from disasters and emergencies by donating blood and through financial contributions. The Red Cross mission is to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of volunteers and the generosity of donors. Ninety percent of the workforce are volunteers that help millions of people, especially during local home fires, wildfires, as well as national hurricanes and earthquakes and the COVID-19 pandemic. Ninety cents of every dollar donated is invested in providing humanitarian services to those in need. Red Cross inspires to turn compassion into action so that all people affected by disaster across the country and worldwide receive care, shelter, and hope. Our communities, individual families, and youth through seniors are ready and prepared. Everyone in our country has access to safe, life-saving blood and blood products. All members of our armed services and their families find support and comfort whenever needed, and emergencies trained individuals are nearby, ready to use the Red Cross skills to save lives. So I'm going to come down and give you a proclamation. Thank you very much for all you do for the Red Cross. And so I'm going to give you, this is the proclamation for the mayor for Red Cross Month, and this one is a proclamation for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. And if you'd like to say a few words?
I'd just like to, as a citizen of Campbell and a longtime volunteer with the American Red Cross, I really appreciate the support of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give her a round of applause. The next item on the agenda is special presentation. Oh, we did that already, sorry. Communications and petitions. There are no communications and petitions. The next is oral request. If there's anybody in the audience or online that would wish to speak to the city council about an item not on our agenda, persons wishing to address the council may speak for two minutes, and if you want, fill out a speaker card. The law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking actions on any item. However, council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. Anybody from the public that would like to speak under oral requests? How about online? Nobody? All right, thank you. Next is the mayor's announcements. March is Women's History Month. The theme for 2024 is Women Who Abdicate Through Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. This theme recognizes women who understand the need to eliminate bias and discrimination from individual lives and institutions. Inspiring quotes for Women's History Month. Each time a woman stands up for herself without knowingly it possibly, without claiming she stands for all women, by Maya Angelou, a poet, activist, and scholar. If they don't give you a seat at the table, please bring a folding chair, from Shirley Grissom, the first African-American woman elected to the United States House of Representatives. I think the important thing about my employment is not that I will decide cases as a woman, but that I am a woman who will get to decide cases, by Sandra Day O'Connor, the first woman to serve as the United States Court Justice. Beginning Tuesday, March 19th, the city council meetings will begin at 7:00 PM and will still be held in these council chambers. The Youth Commission is hosting a Teen John Fair on Saturday, March 9th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the community center at the Orchard City Banquet Hall. The goal is to connect employers to candidates. For more information, please visit our website, campbellca.gov. A museum mixer and happy hour on Thursday, March 14th, from 5:30 to 7:30 in the Carriage House at the Ainsley House. There will be live music, appetizers, drinks, and the opportunity to chat with the Museum Foundation Board members. Please RSVP to cherryfontana@cfont625@gmail.com. The Campbell Police Foundation is hosting a fundraising breakfast on Saturday, March 16th, from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM at the Home Church on Winchester Boulevard in Campbell. Tickets are $25 per person and can be purchased at campbellpolicefoundation.org. Join in the fun on the 23rd Annual Bunnies and Bonnets Parade on Saturday, March 30th, at 12:00 PM in downtown Campbell. The Downtown Business Association sponsors this annual Easter Parade tradition that features marching bands, dancers, community groups, local organizations, and more. Put on your finest vests and your rabbit ears and come join in the fun. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the consent calendar. Is there any members of council or staff or members of the public that would like to pull an item from consent? Ann?
I don't want to pull an item, but I want to recognize or make a comment regarding item 11. And it's the renewal of, or the approval of the contract with Venue Tech for our theater management. And I just wanted to acknowledge in the audience tonight, our theater team, staff, Monica and Venue Tech Judy and Kristen, who are here tonight to support this item. And we've had a longstanding relationship with Venue Tech since 2004, through good times and bad times and ups and downs, and they've been a really good partner with the city, and I'm happy to see that they are being recommended to be the successful bidder tonight, assuming council approves that. So I just want to recognize them in the audience. Thank you.
And thank you, and thank you for attending tonight. All right, I don't see anybody else. Elliot? You're good. No one's pulling an item. All right, so if you make a motion, please reference two, including the desk item nine and number nine, the desk item. I'll take a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar with the desk item on item nine.
Second.
And under, okay, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry, that's my one. Okay, so we have a motion and second roll call, please.
Councilmember Ivy.
Aye.
Councilmember Fratato. Councilmember Spazola.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Aye.
Mayor Landry.
Aye.
That motion passed unanimously. Next on our agenda is public hearings and introductions of ordinances. Number 12 is a public hearing to consider an appeal to the Planning Commission's approval of a site and architectural review permit to allow construction of approximately 10,250 square foot industrial/warehouse building, with an exception to the site setback requirement on property located at 940 and 946 South McGlinsey Lane, file number PLN 2022-215. And does anybody have any disclosures to make about this? I will make a disclosure. I did talk to the applicants. The one is out of town and not able to get back, and the other one is sick in bed and is unable to attend. But I did talk to him and asked him several questions. So at this point, we-
Excuse me? I just want to state for the record that I did do a site visit, but I did not speak to either the applicant or the neighbors.
And I did speak to one of the appellants who had contacted me and indicated I would take a look at the item.
I think we're ready for you now, Daniel.
Thank you. Good evening. This is an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a signed architecture review permit for property located at 940, 946 South McGlinsey Lane. So this is an approximately half acre parcel located on McGlinsey north of Kirtner. It is within the city's LI light industrial zoning district. It is surrounded by industrial properties to the north, south, and west, and residential properties to the east along Dallas. On January 23rd of this year, the Planning Commission approved a signed architectural review permit for a 10,255 square foot industrial warehouse building, with an exception to the site or setback requirement. As shown here on the site plan, the approved project places the proposed warehouse building along the northerly property line with a parking lot and trash enclosure and other site improvements to its south. Along the rear of the property is a 10-foot water district easement that's highlighted in green. Some just quick project details. This building is 22 feet in height, and that's measured to the top of the roof surface, which is below the LI zoning district's maximum of 45 feet. There's an additional four-foot parapet height that goes around the roof that is not technically subject to the maximum height, but it gives the perceived height of a 26-foot tall building. The project is compliant with the setbacks proposed. The normal setback for the northerly side is five feet, but the zoning code does allow an exception down to zero, and the project is coming in at a foyer ratio of .42, which is under the 1.0 maximum allowed under the new general plan. The site is not subject to any parking requirements under AB 2097, but nonetheless is providing 12 parking spaces and is also providing landscaping roughly double than is otherwise required by the zoning code. In terms of the building design, it's a fairly simple, purpose-built flat roof structure, shown here in plastered CMU block and a Sherman Williams earth tone color scheme. In terms of the review considerations considered by the Planning Commission, a big part of it was the reduction of the side door setback, and that's detailed in your staff report. So there is a narrow exception regarding that northerly setback, so this is not the setback against the adjacent property that allows the building to be placed on a property line, subject to some usage restrictions. Additionally, there are findings for approval of signed architectural review permit that largely have to do with zoning code compliance, their plan consistency, and a determination that the project would aid in the harmonious development of the surrounding area, which the Planning Commission did find in the affirmative. The application was appealed within the 10-day appeal period following the Planning Commission's actions. The appeal identifies several grounds for the appeal. First, the building is too tall. As noted, the building at 22 feet is well below the 45-foot height maximum for the zoning district, and at 22 feet, that is also lower than the traditional R1 height of 35 feet, as well as the 28-foot height limit of the R1, a zoning district as codified in the Campbell Village Airport Plan for the properties next door. The setback at 10 feet does meet the minimum setback requirement for the LI zoning district. That was concerned, that was highlighted by the appellants, and that setback is also, as noted in the staff report, a water district easement, which that building cannot encroach into. The appellants also indicate some concerns with noise, but as noted, this is a CMU block building. CMU block buildings are designed to help minimize noise emissions from the inside of the building. The applicant also had previously installed a nine-foot fence along the rear property line, which also should help minimize noise. And there's also standard condition of approval that would allow the director to restrict the operating hours of the building to more restrictive hours than the otherwise allowed, 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, if there are noise complaints. But with regard to noise, more holistically, such compatibility issues probably should be addressed as part of a review of the city's locational operational standards for uses that could create some noise impacts, as identified by the general plan, Action LU1H in particular, which does specifically indicate the city should develop such standards. The applicants also indicate concerns about traffic and traffic congestion, but an industrial building has very low traffic volume, well below the thresholds for traffic impact analysis or BMT review. And lastly, the appellants indicated some concern regarding the stealth tower that's on the property next door, which is not part of this review. So therefore, staff's recommendation, finding that the appeal presents no errors in fact, disputes, and findings are inadequate of conditions to mitigate project impacts, does recommend that city council take an action to adopt the resolution denying the appeal and upholding the Planning Commission's approval of the signed architectural review permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any council member have questions for Daniel? Dan?
I know now is not the time to take other people's testimony, but I'm just curious, do you know if the building owner or developer or the landowner is going to be present tonight?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay. And have you discussed some of the concerns that some of the neighbors who live in the development on Dallas Avenue have with the property owner?
Yes, we did provide a copy of the appeal, explained the concerns that were presented. The concerns were also provided as part of the Planning Commission packet, so we did receive correspondence that he was also aware of, as was the Planning Commission.
Okay. So, and do you know if the, any of the appellants are planning to speak tonight?
As I stated earlier, the main appellant is sick in bed, and the other one is out of town and wasn't able to get back in time. So they will not-
One being out of town, then the one was sick.
One was sick, and so I did speak to them both today. That's how I knew that he was not coming tonight. He regrets not being able to attend, but he's sick.
I see. And then I did have a question about the hours of operation that are permitted. It seems like the hours of operation for that potential type of operation from 6:00 in the morning till 11:00 at night do present a potential noise situation in terms of normal quietness and past normal, what you might call work hours for a business that, or businesses of that nature in general. And apparently, that was, I was just kind of curious how those rather wide range of hours were included in our, currently in the planning documents that were approved by us in general for the city some time earlier.
Yes, so the 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, that came out, I believe, in early 2002. So that was an outgrowth of the former general plan as a way to deal with noise issues. Apparently, the city council at the time found that that was kind of the appropriate range between where noise would be less of a disturbance, but that is currently the citywide hour of operation limitation. Anything after or earlier does require a conditional use permit.
And then I do note that you, in fact, correctly noted that the tower that was mentioned in the appellants' letters is not a part of the meeting, which I understand. However, you did address it in your reply, so I'm going to ask a question about that. And in your comment in the reply, you mentioned that the application for that tower is currently before the city, because what was approved before was one that was designed or designated, designed in such a way that resembled a tree, but the diagram we have is clearly not that. And you said it's being reviewed by the Planning Commission or the planning staff. So is that an element that's being reviewed, the fact that that tower is not sort of disguised as a tree? Is that one of the elements?
The existing one is very old. The new one that was approved by the Planning Commission last year is disguised as a tree, and that was submitted for a building permit late last year, and that's still under review.
Also, the one that's there is scheduled to be replaced.
Correct. Should happen at some point this year.
I may have some other questions later, but I'll hold off until council comments.
Elliot, do you have questions?
Hi there. I was just curious, subject to planning and water district approvals, can we have possibly some kind of plantings along the east side of the wall of the building that might disguise, you know, the actual, the nature of it? Just make it pretty up a bit with nature kind of thing, whether it be trellis or trellises with vines, climbing vines, maybe some small trees, things of that nature.
So the extent that the water district has along the rear really prevents any deep-rooted trees. They actually specifically indicate that. So the applicant's landscaping plans here shows some shrubs. However, the condition of approval that was requested by the water district does give them kind of ultimate authority as to what would be allowed here. My understanding in our correspondence with them is that they're okay with some level of landscaping, as long as it doesn't go down, cause impacts to the water line. It is possible that the applicant could work with the water district to see if they would allow some sort of climbing vines along the back of the building. Presumably, that's not too deep-rooted, but that would ultimately be at their discretion.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions? No. I'll just point out that I looked up the shrub. It's 10 to 15 feet tall. So there will be, and I pointed that out to the applicant today, that the circles that are drawn, that shrub gets 10 to 15 feet tall. So the building's 22, and they would be 12 to 15. And then the option of having vines, that was not, that could be discussed with the property. All right, at this point, I'll open it up to the public. Do the landowner developer want to speak? You have two minutes.
My name's Brent Hasek. I'm the applicant. I'd like to point out a few things. The cell phone tower is two parcels away. It's not my parcel, so that's an irrelevant issue. The hours of operation, whether I have a building or not, I'm allowed to use those hours. So that's really a non-issue. This is an issue of not my backyard for these homeowners. McGlinsey Lane, or my family's been on McGlinsey Lane since the early 60s in a commercial capacity. Heard both the appeals, or the appeal and the letters beforehand. Two neighbors are late 90s or early 2000s. They purchased behind a known commercial district. Now they want to claim they don't want something in their backyard. That's the ultimate NIMBY. My rights to develop the property take precedent over their inconvenience. I'm sure Mr. Sullivan can confirm that. And this is the least obtrusive building that makes, that economically makes sense. I could have gone 40 feet tall and crossed the back width of the property. Not really looking to put vines on the building. Those invite rats and varmen like that. I don't think the neighbors would appreciate that. So that's why I got. Any questions for me?
I don't see any. Thank you very much for speaking. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Anybody online? Andrew? No, we have nobody online. I'll close the public council for discussion.
Well, I did read the appellants' letters, and I, you know, I thought that they had concerns that could have been discussed with the building owner. The council does have some discretion in this matter, contrary to what the builder says. We do have discretion in this matter. And I think actually that, you know, the fact that the appellants are not here to speak due to illness and one being out of town, we should consider continuing this hearing to allow them to speak at the next meeting or so, so that this might be considered further. There are elements of the general plan that were cited in our council report, LU2-2 and 2.8, and another one that's also called 2.8, perhaps. That's a mispronunciation, it would be 2.8 or something, that does take into consideration elements of surrounding neighborhoods. The term neighborhoods is mentioned. The neighbors had been there for a long time. I thought it would have been nice if the two parties would have talked with one another a little bit to see if some elements could have been incorporated or deferential concern to some of the neighbors, to see if anything could be worked out. I do think the rear setback could be a little more than 10 feet. I think that there is adequate space to still, you know, have a property of that type there so that it doesn't need a setback, so that it could have a larger setback than 10 feet. And the noise level is something that is allowed to be brought up by us or by anyone else, and it can be referred to the director of planning, should that become a problem. So we are within our rights to consider this and look into it, and I think we should give the appellants time to sort of present a matter before the council will discuss this further.
Thank you. So for reading the council, the staff report, it appears that the appellants did not attend the Planning Commission meeting as well to voice their concerns about the project. Is that correct, Daniel?
That is correct. They were not in attendance.
And even though the gentleman may be sick, there is an opportunity for him to call in tonight and be heard at the meeting. And to me, the whole, the issue boils down to height and noise, and while I'm sympathetic to the neighbors, I do believe that the project is consistent with the general plan. It's consistent with the zoning. There are some safeguards in place, I believe, that address some of those issues with the construction of the building, which is the block, the concrete masonry block, and there's also a condition of approval to address the noise levels, should those become a problem. So I don't feel that there's sufficient reason to approve the appeal, and I don't, I'm not necessarily in favor of continuing it because of the fact that I think there were opportunities for the appellants to attend both the Planning Commission and council meeting via Zoom. So that's my rationale on it. So that that's my rationale on it.
I I'm largely in agreement with what Ann said, and I actually hadn't considered the point that. Revote is always an option, especially if someone's out of town. So, you know, up to that point, I was leaning toward, you know, I was in agreement, I I think the staff report. Is is very thorough, I I do think that the 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 property owner has. Tried to be mindful in terms of the building height and the concrete masonry materials. To be be mindful of noise. So I I I think otherwise I would have leaned toward perhaps continuing it, but would not have been my my preference, but I think. Knowing that they also didn't attend the planning commission when they had an opportunity, I I I think I'm in agreement with the staff recommendations.
Okay, does someone want to make a motion?
Just make one more comment, I I understand what you're saying. With respect to the one of the applicants or so being able to call in, the thing is, that is just speculation, whether they have the capability and. You know, a computer of such type and so on to do that, we don't know that. And so it's an unanswered question, so that's why I thought we might give them some time to speak to the matter if they wished.
Well, I I'd like to make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution denying the appeal and upholding the planning commission's approval of a site and architectural review permit.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, roll call please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Hi.
Councilmember Fratato.
No.
Councilmember Scuzzola.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Hi.
Mayor Landry.
That motion passes. All right, next on the agenda is item thirteen, a resolution approving and awarding a contract for Chandler Asset Management. In the amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-five thousand to provide investment advisory services for a period of up to three years. With options for the city to renew up to two additional one-year service contracts for a total of up to five years. And authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement as specified in Campbell Municipal Code Section three point twenty point one hundred. And we have our finance director, Will Fuentes, speaking. Bill, can you turn off the speaker mic at the podium, please?
So I, how dumb, I won't go through the whole. I don't, again, you would, you did a great job of. Each one there. But I I will, I will go through. I will go through. Item on our team. For the council to. Consider a. Award to Chandler to. I'll, 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 I'll take you on. I'll take you up, they've done through the process. I won't go through each. Date, but I. First, um, point. To the. Update of the. The update of the. Obviously, that occurred in. That occurred in. To have say ex 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 external. Affirms to. Oversee and. Investor funds. We also did a request of for a request for proposal process. There, there were a couple of firms who turned in proposals. From the request from for proposal process. We also did a extensive due. Process of our, well, of all of approach of proposals, but also our. Three, that are up to. And also our, our top. So, in. Coming on. Choice of the can work. Fucking two county, a couple of things. The expertise. The penalty to. Go through and also to. All of the key. Data that you each day, but but also on the. Penalty to. Ever so by what we. Offer just to 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 also. To also. Assess the risk. To ensure that whatever, whatever. That we've begun is is also. Justified by what whatever are the expected. Expected. As well, it's a, it's a thing that we are able to do ourselves each. Day, it's a thing that. Typically takes a great. Deal of time and expertise and. Data. Canlers like daddy, like great. Who's able to really, like, again, differentiate, but but also. Confirm that the risk return a trade-off is appropriate as well. We, I did also talk to. Public, public, different public agencies in the in the Bay Area. Who are also under a channeler, they, they, they were all. Please. And in 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 terms of the. Cost, they appear well to. I bring of firms out there, but 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 also in. That's, that's very able to. Generate, they're also. Affirm that the only, the only thing that, that the only. People that they, that they work with and all our. Our publications as well, so. We felt the. Take the. What, what, what are they able to do? And also compared to the expense. We felt that they were a good overall of. But also a good overall. Overall. Return on their expenses as well, so we. We do propose. A contract to to. A time to show what does, what are able. I do find like different. But, you know, although we, although we would be under a three-year contract. We, 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 in, 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 in all, in all of our. Contracts, we are also able to. As well, if, if they don't be expected. Otages, if, if they don't. They don't perform, so they, they will be on a judge. Against the work that they do, but. But also they will, they will be judged against. Appropriate as well, in, in terms of. Expenses. Put a not to exceed amount of. Okay, we, we don't expect to spend the. The whole amount. But we, we put the not to exceed amount. As well, we expect our pool and our. Expenses to. Decrease because we're spending down our. But if, if we were to get extra income, if we were to. Get an outside, an outside. Grant, if, if we, if, if we were to say. It, 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 it could, it could also. Increase the pool that we are able to invest as well, so. Enough to say, we. So with that. And with that, I will turn over to. A council, there, 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 there are also two people. People on the. As well, who are here to. Address some.
If you have questions, Dan?
Under vendor selection, you mentioned that they have excellent references, but we've seen none of that. In our council report, there is no data whatsoever. We are proposing to spend possibly up to close to a quarter of a million dollars, and we have no information. And you also mentioned that the return to consistent consistently exceeded applicable benchmarks. I'm assuming that means with other cities or locations, but we have seen none of that, it's not a part of our council reports.
So in, in, in terms of the proposals. The, the, because they, they also. Because they also obtained confidential data. About how each, how each, how each term. How they. We chose to not. A chance to go through the. We, 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 we also. Talk in person to the. Affirms to. To confirm and also get. In what does variable. They do, and in, in. That they are judged against. They, they aren't judged against what they're able to do for. Different public, different, different. They're. Typical. In the. Either a one. Three or of. So it's the typical. Patchmark and.
I guess my concern is, the report mentions that they have excellent references. But we did not see any of those references, we have no testimonials from any other municipalities that have hired these firms and were. Their finance director or their city manager or someone wrote a letter and said, you know, this has been a very good company for us, they've done this, they've done that and so on. We just have no data in our report, I just can't move ahead with this. Without more information to sort of make a judgment, that that concerns me greatly. And it, I mean, your report says they have excellent references, but I haven't seen them. And your report also says the returns are consistently exceeded applicable benchmarks, we haven't seen any of that data. I don't know why it wasn't included in our report, and I'm sorry to be complaining about this, but, you know. We're proposing to spend the city's money of close to a quarter of a million dollars, and we have no data to support this.
In, in terms of, in, in terms of, in terms of the returns. They, they, they are, they are shown under table two. In, in, in terms of the different public. Terms of the different public agencies that I. I talked to the bill. Patis, I talked to. There were two others that I don't recall, but I, 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 I did. Call them and I'll check, and I can, I can, I certainly. But based on. A judgment of. Talking to each director, I, I didn't want to get too far into. I didn't wanna get too far into those, like, those, those words, those words, the words. Um, but I, I, I did, I did feel, uh, comfortable, uh, that they were good. I.
Okay.
Just compares one company gets. Okay, I was, I was trying to go through. Ian, just, just to clarify, I think what's. Each firm to a benchmark of a one to three-year U.S. Treasury and their return yield of point eight one percent above that, uh, and point eight four percent above a one to five-year Treasury, uh, for each of the firms. So that does the benchmarks they used in, in this table.
Uh, Anne, you have a question? No? Okay, no questions to Will. Okay, so I'm gonna open the public meeting. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Anybody online? I see none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion. Anne, would you like to? So Jill first?
Uh, I, I just wanna share the point of, uh, uh, some of the experience of being on the subcommittee because I, I think these are very much fair questions to ask. And, um, I, 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 I guess, looking back, I, I do wish maybe we could have provided a, a little bit more information, like just the names of, of some other references. I, I think those are all fair questions to ask. I, 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 I will say that, uh, I, I thought it was, uh, a very good process being part, uh, of the subcommittee is managed very well. Um, the three firms that we interviewed and we closely reviewed the materials and, and not just their performances and benchmarks, but, uh, uh, many other details about their work. They, they all had strengths. There, there were two that, uh, really stood out, uh, and, and those are the two that are included in the two tables. Um, and, and ultimately came down to staff's recommendation. Uh, there, there were some slight differences between them, but we, we did. I think the feeling was that we, we felt, um, pretty good about going with, with staff's recommendation. I'll, I'll just share my perspective, which is that I said this, uh, probably at least a year ago at this point, when we were talking about, um, uh, about looking for, um, uh, for, for someone to manage this kind of contract for, uh, investment services. Um, I, I, I'm, I, I said I was very skeptical if we're gonna, uh, get someone there who's gonna promise to beat the market and get these huge returns. Um, I, because the data just shows that, that, that's not really, uh, it's, it's kind of, uh, a myth or mirage that people can really beat the market, uh, except for some very, you know, essentially some, some flukes. Um, and I, I was educated going through the process because that's not really what, um, this contract i- is for. Um, there's a couple of benefits that I see. Um, the, the, the biggest one, if I can kind of summarize, is to be much more, much smarter and more efficient about our cash management. Um, and we're gonna have, uh, a firm that can basically look at this full-time, look at what our budget needs are, make sure that, that we're still being fiscally conservative and be able to manage, um, uh, uh, essentially what, um, in our budget looks like investment funds, but is really a way of, of managing cash. And, well, I'm, I'm probably way oversimplifying that, but, um, that's something I, I learned going through this process, and that's something that staff wouldn't have the capacity to, to, uh, from, from my understanding, really, uh, do that, uh, as effectively on our own. Um, and, and then the other benefit that, that I see that, that was clear going through this process is just being able to provide, uh, expert a- advice, analysis, including to us, to the council, if, if, uh, we, we wanna get those reports. Um, I think Chandler is great about, uh, being very, um, open if, if, if we wanna engage more, if we want information a particular way. Um, that, that was one of the, the things that, that I liked. Um, so I, I, y- y- you know, I, I absolutely understand the, 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 the questions, but, uh, being, being through, through the subcommittee, and I'm happy to answer any questions also about the process. Uh, but I thought it was a very well-managed process, uh, very, uh, efficient. We're able to, to ask, uh, you know, get to a good level of detail, um, and have some really good discussion on, uh, the strengths and weaknesses of, of each of the applicants. Um, and yeah, wondering if, if you have anything to add.
Sure, I, I concur with what, um, Vice Mayor Lopez said, um, that the committee did me twice to, to discuss the, the proposals. Um, I have to say that, um, the proposals were very comprehensive, had a lot of information in it, um, a listing of all of their, uh, I, I won't, I won't say all, but a, a large number of their, of their clients whom they serve. Um, and I think what the, the advantage that Chandler has is that, um, they, they have, um, a, a number, um, the continuity of their staff are, are one thing, and then they have a large number of clients within the Bay Area as well as the state of California and that have, um, that are comparable to Campbell. So for me, that was, uh, two, two of the advantages that I saw with, with Chandler. And, um, we did discuss at our second meeting the, um, reference checks. And naively, I guess, I assumed that because they were all glowing that there weren't any negative, um, reference checks that, that Will received when, when he was checking. Um, but again, it is, some of that is pro- proprietary and confidential. So, um, but I'm confident that the reference checks were done and that, um, the clients with whom he checked are, um, uh, satisfied with the service that they're getting. And, and I also wanna mention that, you know, this, I'm, I'm not, I'm a little skeptical about it, um, but, but it's a new and, um, uh, additional tool that we're providing to our finance staff that we don't currently have as far as investment advisory services. And it's gonna take a period of time to really evaluate its effectiveness and its value to the city. And, um, it's not gonna be done overnight, it's gonna be done over a three to five-year period. So a quarter of a million dollars may seem like a lot, but in reality, it's four, forty-five thousand a year over a five-year period. So, uh, for me, I think it's worth, um, the investment to, to see, um, if it, if it, uh, helps our, our finance staff with, with our investments and, and, um, and, and its effectiveness and value to the city.
And, and if, if I can just add one brief comment that I forgot to mention, um, I was pretty confident because it was one of, uh, my, my questions and I had some skepticism, but I, I, I became pretty confident over the process that even very conservatively, just through getting smarter about the funds that we use to manage essentially our, our cash flow, that, um, we, we can make back our, our fees, that there's a pretty low-hanging fruit there, was, was my kind of general analysis.
Sure.
Well, it's unfortunate that the data that you had was not shared with the rest of us. I think that was very unfortunate. And there's nothing in my remarks that would imply that I expected financial data saying, you know, you achieved a twenty percent increase than we would have otherwise because no financial company can or is in the position of doing that. But I thought we should have some data, some testimonial, uh, uh, from someone, but we, we don't. You did. And if something was confidential, then I would imagine there'd be a way that, that could be shared with the council. I mean, we're expected to make a decision, and if you have privy to confidential information, it seems like we as a council should as well, or the rest of the council. Doesn't have to be discussed maybe in public, I don't know the rules about that, but that's my dilemma, okay? So, um, that's why I'm disappointed in this whole process.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I also agree that, uh, Councilmember Fertado brings up some good points, and I really appreciate the clarification by Vice Mayor Lopez and Councilmember Bybee. Uh, so maybe this should be something in the future, maybe. It sounds like we're maybe coming to the idea of, of having a little bit more information, especially when it comes to fairly large financial matters such as this.
I have a question that I catch earlier, but on your third to the bottom line item, it says annual fees will likely range from forty-five thousand to seventy-five thousand? So it's, uh, it's based on hourly? Why does it say forty-five to seventy?
It's based on, upon the, of, the, the, the total, the, like, of, 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 um, that I are able to, that they are able to, uh, and to, uh, that they're able to invest. Um, so if, um, if, if, if I say, um, are able to invest, uh, 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 a hundred million, a hundred, a hundred, uh, of our funds, um, and fifty, uh, fees, uh, per year of, uh, what I be, plus, plus, uh, amount. Um, if, um, if, if they, if, if they only are able to invest, um, say, either thirty or forty, or, 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 or some, um, that, that, um, that the, uh, fees, I just, I don't, the, the, uh, the, um, about that they, uh, charge, um, is based on, uh, right, um, like, charged against a, what, um, they are able to invest.
Okay, and then the three years is the two twenty-five, the extra one year, we, that would be, they'd have to come back to us to expand to the five. So even though it says right here authorize renew up to two additional years, they would still have to come back because you're not giving a dollar amount.
That's, and, and it's, um, just a, a option. And so they, we, uh, we, uh, 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 to extend, um, if, um, if we were to, uh, come, come back to, uh, council to extend, um, they, well, they, um, don't, um, again, like, need to go through the, the full, uh, the full request, the full request for proposal process. Um, but we, um, we would, um, if, um, if they, like, did a, a, a job over, um, the, uh, first, um, the, the first three, like, years of the contract, um, we, we, we also would turn to council, had them, like, like, data, um, to show, um, either, either, well, to us, to, uh, show how, how, well, um, that, that they, uh, performed.
Brian first?
Clarify one thing on the fees. It's, it's very confusing because we have measure O mixed in here, and we expect that measure O is gonna be spent down. Without the measure O money in there, it's a forty-five thousand dollar contract. Just so that, that's the forty-five thousand dollars, I think, Councilmember Bybee, you're forgetting.
Per year?
Per year, that's what we typically spend the next couple of years till we spend that. Those fees will be a little bit higher because our balance will be higher. But we would expect about forty-five thousand dollars a year.
And the two twenty-five is the three years, and even though the contract could have the two-year renewal, it's just you don't have to go out to RFP again. You would come back at that time with the new, if they renew it, right, the money?
Okay. And so I was just gonna make a suggestion. I, I wanna be sure that all council members feel confident in, in voting on an item and, and, uh, making sure they have the adequate information in which to do that. And I don't want anyone to feel that the subcommittee had information that isn't available to the rest of the city council. So my suggestion might be to postpone this for a two-week period and allow the other three council members to review the proposals and, and leave us, um, finance, um, staff, if, so that you feel, have a better understanding of the proposals, and then bring it back. And to do that, you know, that, I'm just trying to suggest something so that everybody is comfortable with the information that's available to all of us.
And do we make a motion on that, or we just don't? We have to make a motion to come back? And? Okay, so I will entertain a motion. So, um, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion at this point.
Uh, so I will make a motion that we continue the item for, to two weeks, if that's, to allow individual council members to meet with finance staff to review the proposals prior to making final selection on this, um, topic.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, uh, roll call please.
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilmember Fertado?
Councilmember Chizola?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Aye.
Mayor Landry?
Aye.
And thank you very much, Anne, I think that was a good compromise. All right, we're gonna move on to item fourteen, which is the fiscal year 2024 mid-year financial update and budget adjustments, and Will Fuentes is our presenter.
Um, I'm, uh, uh, here to, uh, give the F I two, uh, F I two, uh, F I two, uh, twenty-four, um, of the year, uh, um, and I'll just, um, I'll just go through a couple of, uh, key points upfront. Um, I, 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 well, um, state upfront, um, that, um, there, there were, um, there were, there were some unexpected, uh, uh, challenges. Um, us, us certainly, um, we, uh, expected our, uh, P O T, um, to, uh, return to a free, uh, free, uh, uh, free, like, over the balance, um, based on, uh, based upon our, 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 our expertise, um, also based, uh, on the, uh, transit, uh, based on, on the, uh, data, um, it, it, it certainly, it certainly, it's, it's certainly seemed, um, a good, uh, expectation, uh, assumption. Um, but we still aren't quite, uh, to, uh, pre, uh, covered, uh, yet. Um, there's, uh, there's, uh, there's, there's also been, um, a, 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 a couple of big, um, uh, companies in, uh, um, who, uh, generate, um, a big, um, amount of, uh, taxes, um, who are ex- expect, expect, expected to go to, uh, different, um, uh, the different lo- locations in the state. Um, this, this, so it's, um, us, us, us certainly been a, it's really been an impact, um, uh, you are, uh, at this as well. But also in, uh, uh, general, um, our, our, our tax base, um, for, um, the, uh, uh, Q three of, uh, year, uh, uh, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, compared, uh, uh, Q, uh, uh, Q three of, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, us, uh, about a ten percent of, uh, 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 um, so, although I, uh, uh, I, I, I don't, um, call it a recession, um, the, uh, health is, um, us, us, uh, uh, slowed. And on an income of, uh, perspective, um, there, there, there are, uh, challenges. Um, in, uh, uh, terms of the, uh, general fund income, um, al- although we, although we are up, uh, in total, uh, in total, uh, in nine point six eight percent of, uh, of, um, the, uh, that point of, of this year, uh, two thousand and twenty-three, um, in, in, in terms of the budget of, uh, uh, judgments, um, we expect, expect them to be about a, a point, uh, one, one point three six or better than, than, than they are. Um, it's just, um, uh, 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 amount, um, also, uh, does assume, um, that we, uh, a draw, uh, at time, um, of the funds, um, to, uh, both, um, before the, uh, uh, potential, uh, a bail measure, um, that we, uh, could, uh, take up to, uh, vote in the fall, but, but, but also to, uh, cover our, uh, day-to-day expenses, uh, through the act of June. Um, in, uh, terms of our ex- expenses, um, they're about eighteen point two of. They're about eighteen point two, uh, percent above, uh, where, uh, that they were at the, at the same point in. In FY, uh, uh, three, um, it's, it's, it's due to, you know, certainly, certainly, it's, it's, it's inflation, um, but, but, but. But also, uh, pay, um, uh, adjustments that were, uh, approved by the council, um, pension, um. Healthcare, um, but also, uh, just, um, a planned growth as well, um. But all, although our, uh, costs are up, um, they're also under, uh, what, um, what we ex- expected, um. Uh, to, to, uh, a big part in, um, that there, there are, um, a number of, there are a number of. Uh, jobs that are open, um, that we expected, uh, uh, so. Add us, us, a certain point in the. Uh, year, um, they, they aren't, um, they aren't able to, the, um, of, of, held it, like, um, quite the right hand. Us be the, like, expected, um, so, all, all lower income is under expectations, uh. Early, um, it's also. Offset, um, to a big, um, uh, agree by our ex- expenses. Also under, um, we, uh, can't, uh, count of. On our ex- expenses to be under all the time, um, but, uh, uh, currently are, um, so, um. Have, um, a, we'll have to reach income and expense account in the, uh, uh, general fund, but also in our, um, like. After funds as well, um, and we, uh, put, um, uh, together, uh, a few, um, who are opposed, um. Adjustments to, to correct, to correct and address the, uh, problem in the, uh, uh, car here, um. If, um, if they are, um, approved, um, the, uh, the general fund, the general fund budget will be fully, um, fully. Balanced, but again, it, FY, uh, twenty-four, um, in, in terms of the, um. Uh, adjustments, they, they are, um, detailed in, uh, table one, um, if, um, if there are any, uh, odd questions, um. We've, um, we've also each, um, uh, department, um, here, here to address the questions, but in. Uh, of terms of, uh, of personnel, uh, uh, adjustments, we, um, we've, we, uh, we, we. Are able to. A show that we expect that will, uh, about the one point nine in, in a total, uh, watches, um. For a two, for two, for two, for two, for two hundred and eighty-sixty of that expense, um, we also, we also. Oppose that we, that it, that it be, that it should be drafted and spent on either OT, um, outside, um, like, uh. Uh, contact, um, to help us to, uh, get the work done, um, but also upon, um, unexpected expenses. Either to rep, uh, air, an item or whatnot, um, we, we also oppose, uh, again, a adjustment of, uh. Of, of, like, a total, um, so that we are able to, uh, take for, uh, pulling, um, uh, different, um, uh, uh, uh. I said, since, as all the expenses, um, that we, uh, that we could incur from, uh, now through the. End of June, um, so that if the, uh, council does, uh, choose to put a. Valid, uh, uh, valid measure in the fall, um, that we are able to do all of that, of, that, of, that upfront. Um, there, there are also a, a couple other ex- expenses that are shown on the screen, um, but we, uh. Again, um, to, to get our income to equal our ex- expenses, um, we also, again, we're opposed a, a. Truck down of our, our funds of, uh, and then, uh, about nine, uh, nine hundred and, uh, hundred and, uh, hundred. Seventy-three thousand, uh, total, um, in, uh, terms of ARPA, um. Just to, uh, had, just to, uh, had, just to, uh, uh, just to, uh, uh, like, like, uh, council, um. We, like, got about, uh, ten million dollars, um, to, uh, uh, date, um. Have either a, a spend or, uh, uh, approved to spend a, uh, a million. Which, which would, uh, have, um, about, uh, four, about three, uh, three million in, uh, a total of ARPA, um. If, if the, uh, adjustments, uh, tonight are approved, um, if, if what, uh, take ARPA talent to, uh, a million. Um, but I, I, I will, um, like, can state, um, that we, um, need to fully. Either a spend or. Spend or obligate, uh. Applegate, uh, uh, funds through, uh, uh, contracts, uh, by, uh, December of the, uh, current year. And then for any funds that are under, uh, uh, a, a, a contract, um, they need to be spent in a full, uh. By the end of, uh, uh, December of, uh, twenty-six, um, so I don't. Want to come to the, I don't want to come to the ARPA well over and over. Again, uh, uh, we, 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 we certainly, like, can't, and, and, and do this, um. But on. On, on, on. Until, until the, uh, until the, uh, until the ARPA funds are spent. Uh, down, um, they are open to spend on these, like, types of, uh, uh, these types of. Purposes, um. In a, a budget that, uh, come to, uh, uh, counseling in the, in this, uh, in the, in, uh, in the future. We will, um, uh, certainly, like, need to address, um, this, or, or, this, uh, problem, um, I. Our, our, our costs continue to, uh, uh, jump up, and. If our, if our cost were, uh, actually were to stay, uh, uh, same, it, it will still increase. Over time due to healthcare costs, due, due, and your costs, um, just, um, uh, uh, due to, like, general, like, general, like. Adjustments, um, so while we, like, like, again, like, come to, uh, council in. Such a dumb, uh, process, we either, we either need to, uh, uh, adjust our income, um. But also to, uh, maybe, uh, hack at our ex- expenses to ensure that we are able to. Pay, pay for our own expenses. Our, our expenses over time, without, um, without ARPA funds, um, so with that, um. Hey, um, uh, we recommend that the, uh, also accept, um, the, uh, your, uh, but also to, uh, approve these. Adjustments, um, and I will turn over, uh, uh, the council.
Okay, we'll start with questions. Questions, no questions, uh, open at the public hearing, if there's anybody in the audience like to speak, please come forward. Anybody online? No, I don't see anybody jumping out of their chair, oh, Ken winked, gotta come up, all right, just kidding. Uh, all right, so I'll bring it back to council and comments, Ann.
Well, I'll start off by saying that I was very surprised to read the staff report and find out that we were in such a big hole, um, I, I was taken aback, actually, um. But after talking to staff and the city manager, I realized that, um, it, a lot of it is due in large part to the reduction in sales tax and the T O T revenues that, um. Haven't been met, that were projected, and I understand also that it was late information that, that came, came to staff, um. So with that said, um. I, I just want to say that. We are, common sense tells me that we are in a structural problem and we need to address it. One way or another, either by increasing revenues and or decreasing expenditures, um. To, to be able to balance our budget, we can't rely on one-time money such as ARPA funding or salary savings to balance our budget every year. And it's, uh, it's a concern to me, and I think that we really need to be, have a robust and a, and a, um. Good discussion at our upcoming study session on revenue enhancements and how, how we're gonna, um, address, address the problem. Um, with that said, I'm obviously supportive of the, um, recommendation to, to use the ARPA funds to, to balance and the salary savings.
Yeah, and, um, I think that's very well stated, that captures a lot of my, my sentiment and, and concerns, um. I do. I don't know if it's the right, I, I, I don't know if I want to say that made me feel better, but I, I think, you know, I like, knowing that so much of this is due to just one company, I, I, I mean, it both puts it in a perspective. But also highlights some of, some of the risks because they, you know, they, if that happens to another company, y- y- you know, and, and that's part of the conversation I had with staff. Is, um, that, that we need, uh, to, to plan and be proactive and, and just seeing what's on the horizon, um. I, I, I'll definitely be supportive of the budget adjustments today, and I, I thank staff for, for a- all the work there, um, but I, I do. See this report as warning lights flashing, and, uh, unless we're taking, uh, action this year and this year's budget cycle, we're. Really gonna be paying for it down the line in, in ways that are much more painful, um, so, uh. And you stated perfectly, you know, either revenue or, or cutting costs in, in some ways, and I'd rather do that when it's, it's less painful than when we have a bigger hole to, to make up for, um. The only other point that I like added and, and that I'd like to think about is just. S- seeing that the limits, uh, that the, um, timeframe for spending down the ARPA money is gonna be, be coming, um, up so, uh. Coming down so, so soon, um. I, and, and, and honestly, I, I see this at, at this point, I'm, I'm fine with the adjustment today. But in, in terms of the rest of the ARPA funds, I'm, I'm viewing that as different from the structural issue that we have to address, um, be, because, um. As Ann said, you can't use one-time money to, you know, fix a structural issue, that, that's not a real fix, um, so. Given that and given the, the timeframe that we have, um, I, I just think, uh, y- y- the other piece of this, I think, is coming back from the priority setting process and, and that, that's gonna be part of the budget process. Um, and I really think we, we've been, uh, this is not meant as a criticism, but we've been very conservative with our, our funds, I, I. Talked to colleagues in other cities and, and they're, they're, um, shocked that, that we, we have some, let, let alone such a large amount. And, and again, it's not necessarily a criticism, that's, it's obviously that's beneficial in, in the situation we're, we're in today, but it does speak to, you know, the, these funds. Where it's, uh, need, a specific need because the community was hurting and, and was impacted, and so. I think it's really something to think about this year as, as we're facing down the, the timeline, um, and if it, it's that they need be spent by the end of twenty twenty-four, um. That really is, is not a, 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 a long time at all, I mean, that, that's, I basically see as we have to be making those decisions now and the, and the next couple of, of, of months, um, if, if that, um. So, uh, I'll just, I'll leave that, I know it's not the main topic today, but I really encourage us as we go forward with some of these other discussions, to think about how we, we, we can, um. Be a bit bold, I think, in a way that, that, that will really best serve the community's needs, and I, I don't know exactly what, what that is, but I just encourage us, uh. To be ambitious with that, that last remaining chunk, but, uh, otherwise perfectly agree with, with what was said, uh, about our structural issues.
Dan, Elliot, do you have a comment?
Yeah, first of all, I fully agree with my fellow council members and their statements they just made, but, um. It's clear that we're, I mean, for lack of a better word, it seems like we're almost desperately in need of new revenue sources, uh. The, the ARPA money's only gonna last so long, we gotta spend it, um, and it's clear that we're too dependent on our larger companies, uh. One moves away and suddenly it's like, oh my, we're in trouble, wow, what is that feedback coming from anyways, um. So, yeah, ultimately I support the budget adjustments for now, but with, I'm, I'm very, very concerned about, I mean, I've said this many times before, but. The potential dark clouds in the future, people keep whispering economic, uh, downturns on the horizon, and so if we're having issues already right now, this makes me really concerned, so. I, I also don't know exactly what might be our, uh, new revenue sources, but, but we, I think this seems to be something that we prioritize for sure.
Thank you, uh, first of all, I agree with all the comments that have been made so far, I think we can and need to make this adjustment and make, and give the approvals to it, um. We do have the luxury of the ARPA money, which, you know, is not gonna last, of course, but I think it, um. And, and our goal has been, I think, for a long time to try to balance out our sales tax so that it comes from multiple sources, and I. I, I think we've had that goal and I think we should continue that goal to try to do it as best we can, um, I think the loss of this large company that. Uh, which meant a large amount of sales tax, uh, was kind of a surprise and unfortunate that, that that happened, um, but. We have to keep all those cautions in mind, the other thing I wanted to mention is that while the property tax is good right now, um, y- you know, our. Tax assessor Larry Stone has sort of warned or, or said that in his opinion. The future might not be as rosy for the same level of property tax return either, now, other people have said. They disagree and they feel that it's still gonna remain robust, but I think we should take a fairly. Conservative approach in that regard, and it does bear the fact that we need to look carefully as we're planning, especially for our budget for this next year. That we have, you know, appropriate reserves and, and plans and, and, uh, I suppose be a little more conservative than we might otherwise want to be, uh, so. With that, that's all for me, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I, I just thought of this right now, but, uh, one thing, when said big company moved away, you know, they had their reasons, their rationale and everything, and I know there was effort by staff to. Communicate with them and see what could be done, hopefully keep them here, but as far as I knew, it was kind of like they had already made up their mind, that was what I, the, uh. Knowledge or what I received back, but in the future, I don't know, maybe we can have, I have no idea who keeps track of this, because you never can tell when a company just decides something like this, but. Maybe some kind of like, how would you put it, uh, just like putting the feelers out for, especially these ones we're so, so dependent on, you know, for, for the sales taxes. Just like every once in a while checking, like, hey, how you doing, how, how you liking, uh, here in Campbell, you know, any concerns, questions, comments, you know? I feel that we definitely need to do something in that regard to just take the temperature of the, the ones, like, you know, what's our top ten list, you know, like, let's, like, I, every year, let's talk to those guys, you know? Just check in and see, see how they're doing, hopefully they're feeling fine, if they have concerns, hopefully we can address them so that we don't have, you know, these surprises that end up. You know, creating a big hole in our budget.
Well said, everybody, I have a question, if this is where we're at and we're past mid-year, because we're into March, I know these numbers are from before. What are we doing proactively to prevent the end of the year having another million-dollar hit?
I can tell you the big, big surprise was, um, as council.
I can tell you, the big, big surprise was, as Councilmember Bybee says, the sales tax. We just had, just within the last week and a half, meetings with our sales, two weeks, within the last two weeks, our sales tax consultants revising their projections for the year end. We don't expect those to change between here and there. That was the big change in this. There is some existing salary savings in a lot of positions that we're fighting through the recruitments on to try to get them all done. There's not any feasible way that we're going to get through all those recruitments. We've done seventeen already this year in recruitments and it's March. I think there's eighteen left on that list of vacancies right now. And so I don't imagine that those positions are going to fill, so there will continue to be salary savings. But I don't anticipate sales tax figures to be revised dramatically between now and the end of this year.
So besides salary savings, what else are we doing proactively to make sure we don't have this happen at the end of the year?
I think that's an exercise structurally.
Are we tightening our belt?
Well, I mean, honestly, we are, but it's really an exercise for our budget next year. We are with our budget and what we have now those few exceptions that we're proposing tonight, but it will be an exercise in looking at that structurally and making that sustainable. I think recognizing some of those are one-time source. And we're spending that down. And perhaps our strategy was wise and refreshed the council's memory that when we spent that at the beginning, it was spent out of our reserve money. We were told we couldn't put that reserve money back. So we're spending it almost like we're using our reserve. And it's not going to be there. And so that's the discussion we're having internally, and I appreciate the council's comments and you understand that. But there'll be some, some hard discussions come budget time. And obviously the need to look at for additional revenues, not just looking at expenditures.
The third time, okay, Elliot, I don't know.
Yeah, I promise. The last one. I just want to be the squeaky wheel. I know we've put on priorities. Oh, sorry about that. But the vacant parcel tax, I'm looking forward to hearing information if that can be one of the solutions to help us because, like I said, we're looking obviously for revenue sources. I'm very eager to get information on that. As we've been told, something like twenty to thirty percent vacant office buildings as it is, I see it as a double-edged sword where we can encourage the people who own those properties to get people actually in there, which would produce money or start giving us a little bit of a tax because they're just empty buildings or something else. But the point is, I think that's a great potential revenue source. I'm looking forward to hearing about that.
None. I will entertain a motion.
So I'll move that the council accept the fiscal year 2024 mid-year financial update report and adopt a resolution authorizing the fiscal year 2024 mid-year budget adjustments.
Second?
Oh, second.
Sergio, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bybee.
Hi.
Councilmember Fertado.
Hi.
Councilmember Schizola.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Hi.
Mayor Andrew.
Hi. All right, that motion passes. We're going to go to item number fifteen, pass-through funded procurement processes. And we have Ken Ramirez, our administrative analysis and analyst, or I can't. This is not words tonight, sorry. Hi, Ken. Can you hit the red button to get the speaker going? And I found if you put your laptop directly in front of the speaker, it's harder to kind of shift it a little.
Good evening, Harvard Mayor, Council. Tonight, I'm here to briefly discuss with you a little bit about our pass-through agreements and how they pertain to our procurement policy. And hopefully you can consider a few of our insights as we see that there is an opportunity to improve not just the process for the city, but for applicants as well. So tonight, we'll be defining in a little bit clearer aspects what our pass-through agreements are. What, how the city currently processes and sees and views our procurement process, practices for pass-through agreements. And hopefully give us an input as to what we, what we feel are slight modifications for the process. So on occasion, the planning division does receive submittals from both applicants and developers for certain projects. And during the development of these projects, sometimes there is a need for environmental reviews. Sometimes there is a need for technical studies. Sometimes there is a need for professionalized services. It is when this happens that the city may enter into a pass-through agreement, which is completely separate from other processes or other contracts because these agreements are processed and accepted through applicant-funded agreements. So the applicant pays fees to, for example, conduct the traffic study for their project, conduct the geotechnical study for the project, or sometimes a project is so large that it requires an environmental study, such as a sequo document, to be conducted for their site. Now, historically, the city has had an ad hoc process for pass-through agreements like this. Sometimes they are independently submitted to an RFP process. Sometimes they are sole source, depending on what the need is. But we see an opportunity to stabilize and modify the process so that it is mostly both for the city and the applicant. Now, the city's current procurement policy does not distinguish between private funds and applicant funds. And what we're trying to do is to establish that, that difference between funds being funneled by the applicant or the developer versus it being encumbered through the city general funds. Currently, all funds that are encumbered by the city have to go up to the city's general RFP, RFQ process. And hopefully you can consider some insights as to how we can modify the process. So we are asking that the city council consider holding a larger, more broad RFQ process to establish a bench, a bench of technical consultants, one specific to one bench would be specific to a list where applicants can choose from, and a separate bench will be a list of SEQA slash technical consultants that will be selected solely by city staff for the specified projects. Now, to do so, we would need to establish a master service agreement, which would be, which would have all the indemnification liability language that our current contract service agreement has, our standard contract service agreement has. But we would also need to establish a procurement policy that allows for these pass-through applicant funds to be distinguished and noted. And we would also need to amend our city's purchasing ordinance to allow for these pass-through applicant-funded agreements. With that being said, if there's any questions, comments, or things that I can highlight or review, I'd be more than happy to do so.
I'll start with questions. Sergio. Dan?
So my, my question is, if we pre-qualify certain businesses to perform these functions for us, when you come back with the documents and so on, will they include ways in which new businesses might be able to apply for that designation as well? Or will the businesses that are there have some sort of expiration date, if you will, or have to like re-qualify after a period of time, but just sort of like being fair to other businesses and sort of checks and balances on our part that caused the agreement to have a, an expiration date or a renewal, you know, sort of a mandatory renewal after a certain period of time or something?
Yeah. So what we have seen with other municipalities of similar size within our region is that they establish three to five-year service agreements, one to lock in the fees and the schedule for those periods of time, and also to not box in the city to a specific firm or consultant. So we're looking at a three to five-year term for the master service agreement. But that allows us to, you know, have these, have a stable, consistent bench of firms. Hopefully that answers your question.
Go back one slide. Okay, so you're going to conduct an RF, or you're going to write the RFQs, you're going to conduct a process to select them and to have an agreement. This master list, it's a three to five-year term for the master list. And then there are certain companies that come in to file an application that can pick someone on the list, but then there's that we have the choice to pick people on the list. It's all one list.
It's, there's two lists. So one would be a technical consultant list, and we're trying to identify what categories and what type of studies, surveys, professionalized services would fall under the state and which ones would fall under list B. But at the time that we bring the RFQ and the ordinance and the policy, we would present to city council and to city staff what the distinction, what the distinction between both lists are.
Tell me again, what are the two lists?
One is technical studies. And another one is SEQA and technical studies, so specific to environmental documents.
Okay, so the technical firms could be like a geotechnical engineer, a civil engineer.
Arborists, noise studies.
Don't we already have some, like we have a plan review firm that we use? Is that considered part of this master list now? We have one firm that we renew the contract.
It's for structural engineering. That's on the building side.
Oh, you're talking about plan check services.
So those plan check services, that's on the building side. So this would be on the front end for the planning studies. I think the idea is that we want to retain authority to hire the SEQA document, SEQA consultants and any technical studies. It's important to SEQA study because we're the responsible agency versus the other studies that don't have that stringent requirement. Then they would be paying directly, hiring those contractors directly, and that money wouldn't be coming through the city's books and presumably easier for Will and his staff than to track those that are coming through without that large volume.
And do we have a rotation on the list that we don't always use the same firm?
When we stand up the policy, the code and the ordinance, we would, we would review and go over what the rotation would look like, if there is a rotation, when we would go back out, back out RFQ, all the limitations to the service agreement, the master agreement, and what applicants and firms would be able to expect once they, they agree to the master service contract.
Because what I'm used to, I'm used to being on these types of lists and that what they, some of the cities do is one, two, three, four, we go down the list. One, you get the first job, you get the, that way it does rotate through and that we're not always picking the same consultant. So that is something that will be evaluated later, right?
Yeah, that's, that's very good of them.
I have two questions. First one is a follow-up to your question. Just to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly because you're asking, in the scenarios you're posing, the city is picking one of these contractors from the list. I thought the purpose of creating a list was for the public when they need to go through the planning process that they can pick the services. Yeah, so am I conflating that or am I, okay.
Got it. The purpose is to really provide some efficiency in this process, and it's been clunky in the past. The second, that's the first purpose. The second purpose is to try to cleanly so we don't run into issues with finance in that, essentially establishing a trust and having to track numerous projects, some of which are minor. And this will allow us to bifurcate those two, those that just require those technical studies. That money, the concept would be they would hire directly off of that list directly. That money wouldn't pass through us. They would pay those fees, those pre-negotiate fees. Those that are SEQA studies, you pay control over, we would choose from that other list. And we'd have.
Oh, that's what you're asking.
There's two lists.
Two different lists, and they would be used differently. List A would avoid that money coming through our funds and I think make Will and his staff a little bit happier. There's no to track.
Yeah, yeah, no, I get that perfectly.
It's two lists. For the city list, I'm used to seeing you rank, we rotate, you get one project.
Yeah, and how we select from the list, that's subject discussion part of what we're doing here tonight. Give your feedback. So we'll take that feedback and think about that as we draft the policies.
I just think I'm trying to be fair and like Dan's comment is what happens when a new firm comes in? Well, we know this group is for three years and then, yes, you're a new business, but you're in a three-year cycle and, but you do get rotated through the list. You're not always picking the same firm.
Yeah, and my second question kind of goes to that too, which is that there's a, I totally support the idea and concept. I think it's great that you're bringing this. There's a few details, either ideas that you've heard or, you know, you're saying exactly what's going to go on one list versus the other. So what's the next point for that policy, the policy to come back before the council? Is that when the RFQ is written? What? What does that look like?
The next step would be for us to draft what that policy would look like to identify, by keeping the appropriate amendments to the ordinance that would capture those pieces, stand up a draft master service agreement for city staff or department and city council to review. And then to share with you what the process will look like and then provide us additional feedback before we start doing the readings.
Okay, great.
All right, no more questions. I'll open it up to the public. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak? Oh, I'm sorry. I do. You're right. I have John over here. Come on down. John is going to speak on this item. You got to get up here before you start speaking.
I'll make this quick. I don't quite understand why this process is called pass-through. Could you enlighten me about that? And secondly, you talk about the contractors. Will the city check these contractors out if and when they decide to do business with them?
Okay, I can answer probably the one, yes, we will check them out. That's the RFP process, RFQ is they submit their qualifications, staff reviews the qualifications to make sure they're qualified. So there is, it's not just, we're going to pick a firm. It's pretty lengthy. They submit, I've worked on these projects. I went to school. I have all this experience. So that is what the RFQ, RFP process is.
Okay, thank you. I just did not quite understand the terminology and I just wanted to get, get everything straight in my mind.
Okay, and pass-through meaning what you've been talking about is an outside company who's filing an application has to be, say they're required to hire an arborist. So instead of us hiring the arborist, they, we pass it through them, right?
Yes, that's the concept. And I certainly say our staff's more than happy to sit down with John and help explain it. But the idea is it's dealing with applicant money, not city projects. This is money the applicants have to spend to perfect and prosecute their, their project and their application. And how that money passes, we take the money from the applicant and we pass it on to the contractor, and that's not the most efficient process. So that's, that's the process that we're talking about is revising that process of passing what the applicant paid to a contractor and how that funnels through the city and making that efficient.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that.
And John, we have your phone number here. Would you like our staff to reach out to you and help you understand more? Or do you have enough today?
At your convenience.
Okay.
Thank you.
There's our point person right there. Okay? Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Anybody online? All right, I'll close the public here and bring it back to council.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
I want to thank staff for bringing this forward. It's a good suggestion and a nice way to streamline the process for both staff and the public. And then I just wanted to piggyback a little bit on what's been said about the master service agreement for the SEQA technical consultants at the city and enters into the agreement with. I'd really like to see a rotation basis included in, or a process for the rotation included in the policy or the ordinance.
Yeah, just brief comments. There have been some great suggestions. I think I would support all of them. I just, I just really want to thank staff because this is not necessarily a big flashy item that's going to attract a lot of attention, but I think it really shows how the city tries to just make things better for residents, for people, for applicants, and just have a better customer experience, if you will. So really appreciate that.
I had the opportunity to meet with the planning staff. I went to and met everybody and I was thoroughly impressed by the qualifications, especially you. I didn't know what your background was. It was greatly appreciated to share that with me. And what I've seen is that you guys are being very proactive as bringing these things forward. You brought the one forward that came through the planning commission about the permitting. And these are the kinds of things that really project out to the community. Hey, you know, they're being proactive. They're looking at how to streamline the process. They're looking at how to keep finances from not, you know, getting mixed up and everything. to keep finances from not, you know, getting mixed up and everything. So I, I really appreciate that. And it's great to see you coming forward and, and bringing it. My big takeaway for, for me, what you should take away from me is the rotation, making sure we're fair. I mean, that's always my big thing is are we fair to people? And not necessarily ranking them on a list, but rotating through the list of people. All right. So I'll entertain a motion. All right, now we're going to move on to unfinished business, but there is none. And then we'll go ahead and do council committee reports and I'll start down at the center tonight.
I listened to the recent State of the Valley that was sponsored annually by Joint Venture Silicon Valley. So it's always a good report. You know, the thing is Silicon Valley is, remains an innovative capital of the world and all these wonderful things about our, our area, which is great. The two very negative and unfortunate things are that housing costs are still skyrocketing out of, out of proportion. We're one of the highest cost areas of the country to live in and a lot of people just can't afford a house anymore. In fact, a great majority don't have the funds for down payments and, you know, securing a house. Even rentals are high. The other part of that, of course, another sad economic factor is that the wealth inequity is continuing to grow. The haves have more, the have-nots have not, have less, less. And it's really sad and I, I wish there was a way that we in this valley could seriously address that because it's just getting way out of proportion. It's sad. But other than that, it's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. A few for me. I had my first meeting of the Bay Area Air Quality Management District Policy Grants and Technology Committee, first ever meeting because the, what we did was combine three committees to be more efficient with our schedule throughout the year. And it's great because they're all ones that I was interested in, but it does mean very long meetings now. But, which is great. In this one, we actually had not one, but two items relating to lead in aviation, which as we may know, here is a particularly hot issue because of Reed Hill View. And what I learned is not just that one, but actually dozens around the, the Bay Area, including others in Santa Clara County. And I'm, I'm, I'm definitely no expert, but it's interesting just having, being able to share perspective just from listening to what's going on here. For, for many people, it's the first time they're hearing about the topic and they're realizing this is an issue in their own community. But there's also really fascinating developments, both with the technology on the business side and on the federal regulation side, along with the state side that some legislation in this cycle, which if anyone has questions or an interest, I'm happy to talk in, in, in more detail. I've actually also spoke with members of the public. So there's a lot of interest in, in, in this topic. Since the meeting, I've, I've had people reach out. And my big takeaway was just that I think it'll continue to be a hot issue around California, but particularly in, in our county because of some of our airports. Also had, was actually, and I see Ken Johnson in, in the audience. We were two of the judges. Ken was judge number one. I was judge number two, which as Art Low kept saying over and over, didn't mean much, except he got there first. But we were two of the judges at the Lions Club speech contest and I think Ken would agree both. Both of the applicants were, were really incredible, very tough to make a decision. But also very, very impressed with when it was going to go on to the next level. I think it's the, the district level or I might be getting that wrong, but for, for the contest. So hoping that they do well. Also had a VTA workshop and although it's mostly information items and discussion, big topic of discussion for that one was the VTA East Ridge Light Rail Connector, which others may, may know more than I, has been going on for, for decades, but is finally moving forward with, with a fairly aggressive funding schedule for getting things moving in, in a community that I think in a lot of ways, as I shared, has, has been left behind out of the, the conversation in, in a lot of ways. So it's just interesting to see some of the dynamics of, of that shifting. Also had the chance to attend our Gamble Lunar New Year celebration. So really appreciate our Parks and Rec staff extending an invitation to that. Pack, packed house at Orchard City Bingo Hall, some really incredible performers. What seemed like incredible food, which sadly I, I couldn't stay for, but so I was sad about that, but I really just seemed like, like an incredible event. And I also had my first meeting of the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Audit Committee, where we elected our chair and vice chair and gave, gave some input. Especially spent a lot of time talking about our cybersecurity, which I, I'm just seeing as a common theme across a lot of agencies, really being something that they have to deal with. So I think those were the main ones. Also appreciate staff inviting council members to to where the community center and the adult center. Really great to see the volunteers and all the work going on there. And of course, we had our priority setting session as well.
Thank you. I already reported on the finance committee meetings that we, that I attended with Vice Mayor Lopez. And I also attended the Recreation Open House on Saturday and it was nice to see the different vendors who provide classes and programs for our residents as well as our city staff and, and the programs that they deliver to our community. So it was a nice event.
Thank you. And I did attend the Open House on Saturday. It was, it's amazing what they're teaching kids at such early ages these days and the robotics classes that they had and speech and debate. I mean, I was, I was very impressed and they had art projects for the kids. And so it was very nice to be there. I also, Natasha gave me a tour of the adult services and I was there the tax day that they had free tax services. So that was nice. Brian and I attended the mayors and managers meeting on Wednesday and the housing elements came up. We were very proud to say that we had ours approved. Not many of the other cities that were there had those approved. I don't think any of them were. So we were very proud to tout our horn that we got ours passed. I had the opportunity, wonderful opportunity on Thursday to go to Stanford. We were hosted at the Hoover House, which I found out when Herbert Hoover found out he was president. He was there at the house. We were in the room where he was notified that he was president. It was small gathering, very intimate. I thought it would be a big event. It was twenty mayors. We each had a person from Stanford kind of with us and first I was kind of like, you're following me around? Oh, he's supposed to be following me around. But we met the president, the provost and the dean of several departments. So it was very well, very nice. Tea sandwiches and we could, the wife of the president gave a couple of us a tour downstairs to see the queen's bedroom that she slept in. So that was really nice. I will be attending the DCA meeting tomorrow morning, talking about all their events. Some of us are attending either the girls softball on Saturday or the boys little league on Saturday. I think we're pretty evenly split on who's going to which one. And then I am speaking tomorrow at CSI. They're having a sixth through eighth grade general assembly and they want, I think there's one other person on the panel talking about being in public work and somewhat of how your career has helped you get to be where you're at today. So I think that's it for the good of the order. I'll call the meeting close.